Correspondents.
Commissioner has been provided with the correspondence by the first office until the next meeting. This correspondence will be available in the office of the Director of the Board of Directors.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
On your favor, both of the cabinets. Okay. Ordinances. The clerk will read ordinance number four sixty-two.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Minutes?
Minutes. No mistake. There are no motions to accept the minutes or the motions to adjourn.
Thank you.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Capel.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Okay. Oh. I'm heading myself here. Okay, yes. Commissioner McCollum will be presenting the resolution to President Mark McCormick from Middlesex College in reference to Community College Month.
Good evening, everyone. Pleased to be President Mark McCormick. It is my honor on behalf of the Middlesex County Board of Commissioners to present you with the proposition. Whereas it is to contribute attention of the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Middlesex, and the Middlesex College is worthy of special recognition as it has been named in celebration of Community College Month. And whereas the more than twelve hundred community colleges in the United States have made significant contributions to the availability and affordability of higher education in the United States, which more than twelve million students participate in credit and non-credit programs at community colleges each year. And whereas by providing educational opportunities in traditional and emerging fields at costs and locations accessible to all community colleges serve communities by helping individuals develop skills and transfer to growth, expand their career options and abilities that will aid them in improving their lives, excuse me, and becoming actively engaged members of their communities. And whereas Middlesex College serves Middlesex County and demonstrates in many positive ways that community colleges impact their communities by following its missions to provide access to a quality, affordable education for diverse population, to support student success for lifelong learning, and to strengthen the economic, social, and cultural life of the community. And whereas Middlesex College is a federally designated Hispanic serving institution with a long history of providing educational opportunities for a diverse population of students. And whereas Middlesex College partners with Middlesex County and its municipalities through its Edison campus and its centers, locations in Brunswick and Perhamwood, and is exemplified by its strong partnership with K through twelve school districts in Middlesex County to provide students with an affordable opportunity to earn college credit while in high school, with four-year colleges and universities throughout the state of New Jersey to provide pathways for seamless completion of a bachelor's degree, with employers in Middlesex County to prepare skilled workers and provide workforce development and customized training for their employees, and with the Rutgers University and Robert Wood, Robert Wood Boren's help in the development of new academic programs and specialized opportunities for Middlesex College students to be involved in a new cancer institute being built in Brunswick. And whereas Middlesex College supports the residents of Middlesex County by providing a welcoming environment for all, continually assessing the provision of services and assistance to support equitable outcomes for all, and supporting students through making many, making many educational resources for courses available to students at no cost, while students support through his community resource hub and food pantry, and focusing on supporting student veterans. And whereas the strength and success of Middlesex County and its communities is dependent on collaborative and productive partnerships like that forged between Middlesex County and Middlesex College. And now I, Shinon McCollum, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners of Middlesex County, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-two as National Community College Month in Middlesex County, and recognize the important ways in which Middlesex College serves Middlesex County and its communities. President McCormick, thank you. This was a roundtable. My apologies for my allergies.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations. I appreciate it.
I would also like to echo my colleagues' remarks in reference to the college. I am very proud of that college that we have. We are able to see so many students graduate from there and really have great careers. And seen through the years that so many of them have gone to really major prominent universities and even Ivy League schools. And that's, that's a testament to the administration, the president, and all of faculty. They have to say thank you for your job well done because you're really making a difference in the future of our students.
Okay. The clerk, we have ordinances. Clerk will read ordinance number four sixty-two on first reading.
The ordinance of the four sixty-two, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various equipment and furniture and undertaking various fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvements at and for facilities of Middlesex County College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated two million dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of two million dollar bonds or notes, bonds or notes of the county for foundation such appropriations while raising the publication, public hearing to be held on Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, at seven o'clock P.M. publication thereof.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance number four sixty-two on first reading?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Capel. County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Clerk will read ordinance number four sixty-three.
Bond ordinance number four sixty-three, bond ordinance providing fiscal year twenty twenty-three general capital improvements and the acquisition of various equipment for the Middlesex County Vocational Technical High School located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating three million five hundred thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of three million five hundred thousand dollar bonds for the notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, at seven o'clock P.M., authorizing publication thereof.
Is there a motion to approve number, ordinance number four sixty-three on first reading?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber. It is County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Capel. County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Clerk will read ordinance number four sixty-four.
Bond ordinance number four sixty-four, bond ordinance providing for the undertaking fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvements and at and and for certain facilities of Middlesex County College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating four million five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of four million five hundred and sixteen thousand dollar bond or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, the principal of and interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to chapter twelve of the laws of New Jersey of nineteen seventy-one, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, at seven o'clock P.M. in publication thereof.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance number four sixty-four on first reading?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber. Yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Capel.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of commissioners, County Commissioner Carradell, Esco de Barber.
Thank you, Director Rios. April is Alcohol Awareness Month. Tonight, the Middlesex County Commissioners issue a declaration of honor of Alcohol Awareness Month. Now it is in the thirty-sixth year. Alcohol Awareness Month is observed to increase public awareness and reduce stigma with regard to alcohol use disorder and alcohol related issues. This year's theme, for the health of each, early education on alcohol and alcohol use disorder is intent to re-educate the community with focus in prevention and sick treatment. Middlesex County supports a range of evidence based in prevention, education, early intervention, treatment, and recovery support services. I would like to remind everyone that the deadline to submit your taxes this year is Monday, April eighteenth. Preparation services are available to taxpayers with low and moderate incomes, with especial attention to those age sixty and older. Please go to the Office of Aging and Disabled Services or visit the county webpage for more information. And that concludes my report, Director Rios.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny.
Uh, no report tonight, Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie Capel.
Yes, thank you, Director. Bond ordinances. As we just heard, tonight we introduce three bond ordinances, four sixty-two, four sixty-three, and four sixty-four, that focus on the county's educational system. The ordinances will provide funding for various campuses of our vocational school district for projects such as replacing every pair of multiple depleted roofs and teach back equipment at various schools, classroom accommodations to improve security door keyless entry system, replacement of curving and sidewalks, technology improvements to enhance remote learning ability. For Middlesex College, these ordinances will provide monies for minor capital infrastructure projects to maintain existing buildings such as delivery and equipment, and technical improvements to pack extended A equipment. Chapter twelve funding shared with the state of New Jersey will be used to renovate Billy Johnson Hall and replacement of the roof in the main hall building and replace the floor of the gymnasium. By adopting these ordinances, we continue to stand firm in our commitment to offer the highest quality education to our students. Because of the corner, because the cornerstone of a great community is not lack of education. In addition, we continue to issue these bonds under our triple-A trading umbrella, which results in direct savings for county taxpayers and a gay law enforcement. Thank you, Director. That is my time.
Thank you. Commissioner Shinon Scott McCollum.
I'm going to try this again. I'll say. From the Arts Institute in the Middlesex County. The Arts Institute will be celebrating National Poetry Month in partnership with the civic league of greater New Brunswick performed art historian time series every Wednesday at four thirty. This will include a new, unique every week in an arts and craft activity program hosted virtually via Zoom. Throughout the month of April, the Arts Institute will be celebrating with partner organizations to commemorate local poets, publishers, literary enthusiasts, and celebrate their courage, cadence, and song of poetry. The New Jersey State Council on the Arts, in partnership with the Arts Institute, is pleased to invite visual artists to submit their work in digital art and private art for consideration to be included in a transitional art project to public art display in New Brunswick's train station. Please visit the New Jersey State Council on the Arts website for more information. From the Office of Career Opportunities, Office of Career Opportunity in partnership with the New Jersey Home Bakers Association, the Stargate Public Library, and Rutgers Food Innovation will be hosting a virtual training event, the Sweet Shop of Baking and Business Workshop on Thursday, April twenty-eighth, at one P.M. that will feature a curated menu and panel discussion on the New Jersey Cottage Food Law and how it applies to home bakers and entrepreneurs. The New Jersey Cottage Law allows direct sales from home at farm markets and events. Please visit our county website for further details. For more information on upcoming skill up convention workshops, please call the Office of Career Opportunity at seven three two, seven four five, three nine five five, or seven three two, two nine one, one three four one for you in sixteen twenty-four. Thank you. Director, that is my end.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tamal.
Thank you, Director. Last weekend, Plays in the Park welcomed over two hundred and seventy at the Rockland Hall additions. The callbacks will run this week, and rehearsals for the shows begin May first, twenty twenty-two. Plays in the Park, sixtieth season of the summer shows. Something Rockin' runs from June twenty-second to July second. SpongeBob Musical runs from July thirteenth to July twenty-third. A Chorus Line runs from August third to August thirteenth. More information on the exciting season can be found on our website. And remember, all Mondays and Tuesdays during the season are free to our veterans, and all shows are free to anyone who's serving in our services, military services, any night they can come with their family. Our first, uh, first volunteer event for the Conservation Core will be held this Saturday, April ninth, at the Record Bay Waterfront. Join us, join us for a beach sweep and clean oceans action from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. Volunteers will comb the shoreline at the Record Bay to help keep the shores, shores beautiful and debris free. I hope you can join us for this world, world, world worthwhile event. The picnic season is in the county parks begin, begins this next weekend, April sixteenth. If you're looking to host a party, a reunion, or a summer barbecue, you can reserve a technique at one of our beautiful parks. You can check out availability, review the facilities of each park, and book your reservations all on our website. That concludes my report, Director.
Thank you. I would like to provide an update relative to the animal havens at our county parks. As previously announced, I informed our residents that the county commissioners secured a consult to completely comprehensive review of our parks' facilities inclusive of our animal haven. The Board of County Commissioners and our staff have been working with French and Perillo and Zoo Advisors to play a key role in the county's overall vision and master plan for our park facilities. Zoo Advisors is a professional full-service service firm that specializes in strategic and business planning, feasibility research, economic impact studies, and government evaluations for zoos, aquariums, and conservation areas. Both French and Perillo and Zoo Advisors are part of a larger strategic plan related to our entire parks and recreation system. Bringing in a professional service team to complete this assessment is consistent with the approach the Commissioner Board has always taken in providing best-in-class services to our residents, whether through partnerships like those with RWJ for our Roosevelt Care Centers, or Rutgers University for our Destination Twenty Forty Initiative. The county has always seen the value in engaging with experts. During this assessment process, the county implemented an interim relocation plan for some of the move more vulnerable animals at Johnson Park to Merrill or Thompson Park. We completed those transfers in February, and all animals have adjusted well to their new homes. Our work with French and Perillo and Zoo Advisors has been productive and based upon recommendations from the assessment and discussion with Commissioner Tamal and county staff. We look to implement the following recommendations from the assessment. In support of our Destination Twenty Forty goals, we will establish a new facility adjacent to East Jersey Old Town as part of a new historic animal husbandry program. East Jersey Old Town Village is our collection of historic structures from the seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds that through innovative exhibits, public programs, and living history tells the story of Middlesex County. The location of the village out of the flood zone has been identified for some of the animals. The select group of animals will provide a platform for this historic animal husbandry program that dovetails into our Destination Twenty Forty goals and professional planning recommendations and comprehensive assessments of the site. Animals being transferred include horses, goats, roosters, and a cow. This is a long-term strategy in cooperation with the Arts Institute of Middlesex County and the Division of History and Historic Preservation. We are already in the process of building out the necessary needs for that area. More information will follow as it becomes available. Last week, four alpaca were transferred to the care of Live Free Farm, Montgomery Township, New Jersey. This is consistent with our goal to find more resilient homes for the animals. The county has already engaged Zoo Advisors to prepare a stringent vetting process to be undertaken before the transfer of any remaining Johnson Park animals to outside facilities. We will work with Zoo Advisors to assess additional sanctuaries and locations to potentially receive animals, as well as evaluate sanctuaries that have already received animals to ensure compliance with their standards. These animals will be transferred, the, I'm sorry, these animals to be transferred include whitetail deer and fallow deer, a red fox, raccoons, a miniature horse, pythons, iguana, rabbits, roosters, and goats. We will finalize the criteria and begin the vetting starting next week. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be added?
None.
Any resolutions to be amended?
None.
Any resolutions to be held?
None.
Any resolutions to be voided?
That will be previously voided. That was in the chat.
Okay. At this time, I open up the meeting to public on any resolutions listed only. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Meeting Commissioners, Charlie Carradell from New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. Want to ask about some of these items under Mr. Kelso's section here. So the more special assistant county councils, the Doria Annesia, and...
Which, which, which number, Charlie?
Four forty-two and four forty-three are the first two I want to address.
Those, those are renewals.
Renewals, okay. Now, I am going to ask about something later in the meeting involving a law firm, Florio Perucci Stein Harp and Capelli. Just wanted to be clear, that's no relation to Florio Kenny Ravall L.L.A. Different firms, different Florios.
No, they're not.
Okay. How about the next one, four forty-four, the labor agreements? Can you tell me, uh, what is included? Are there raises? If so, how much?
Consistent with all of the labor negotiations we've been across all twenty-five unions, they consist of N.W. Lang, which is a little, two to seven year, over four-year contract, which is consistent with the other contracts that have been awarded.
Thank you. Sorry I missed the state of the county, number four forty-six is for the food. Uh, can you just tell me, was it video recorded? Is that video going to be shared with the public?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Jumping ahead to page six, I see a contract for Jersey Mail Systems. I just wanted to ask for some information about the county clerk and the errors made in the Middlesex Borough election. Apparently, the mailings that went out had the wrong polling places on it for a lot of them. Were you aware of that? Can you comment on that? And was this firm responsible, or another firm, or someone in house?
I can't answer that question, Charlie.
Okay. I do appreciate the communications people responding to my emails on this, but the county clerk needs to speak for herself. There have been too many mistakes for her to...
Let's talk about this resolution, Charlie.
And, well, you're approving her, her items. She's putting on the budget here. I don't see her here to defend herself, but she's hard to find and not responsive when I ask questions. They only, it always comes from a nameless person in the county, but not her. I shall move on, because I do really want to ask about the global telephone contract at the top of page fourteen. This is, of course, the telephone service provider for inmates in the county jail. They've done a terrible job and a terrible company. In my estimation, can somebody tell me what are the rates that the inmates are being charged under this contract?
There's no commission funding for the county on this.
Right, I asked what the, the folks who are paying have to pay, right? So if your, if your loved ones in, in incarceration, you, you don't get, get called for free, there's a charge, no?
Mark, can we answer that?
Sure. Uh, Charlie, there are set rates based on the FCC and state, uh, probably the state legislation on the set rates. I don't have the exact figures that Anne does, but the rates are set in legislation. So whatever you charge inmates for a phone call is, is the minimum amount based on legislation.
Okay, so I want to be clear. It's being said that there's legislation that sets a minimum rate? You can't, you can't offer calls for less? Or is it a maximum rate?
No, actually, I believe it's a maximum rate.
So we're charging the maximum, not the minimum?
I'll get to the figure, but it's not, it's a very small one. It's not, it's, it's the legislation is intended to basically set the corporate possible, just that cost.
Does global telephones, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I have limited amount of time. Does global telephones still have a minimum charge? So if somebody wants to contact their family member, do they have to put in minimum twenty-five dollars to create an account still, just to make one call? Is that still how it works?
No, there is, it is established in the campus.
Right, so people who may be in, in jail for one day, their families have to, to pay twenty-five dollars just to make one call? I think that's exploitative. I think that's wrong, and I think that in, in, in my estimation, this, this firm should not get the contract. Please reject it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public want to speak on any resolutions listed only?
Do we have resolutions?
There's resolutions that are listed on one of those papers here. I'm sorry?
We would like to talk about the park.
You can't right now, ma'am. There's another section for public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, Somerset Street. I would, uh...
Somerset Street, New Brunswick?
Yes. Uh, first I would like that we act about five thirty-six. If there is a recycling plant, plant...
Five thirty-six?
Yes. In, in, in New Brunswick, if this is located, located on Jersey Avenue, please, why does New Brunswick still have to pay? This, this company from viewing that doing a horrible job that's littering New Brunswick, and I turned into pictures to show what horrible job this company is doing. It's, it's, it have your own place here, would be our own place here, please. Why do you keep playing this, this company's, I can't pronounce it, salatari, or how do you say, communing? And I expect that to you from before, please. Majority of the litter from New Brunswick is coming from that company doing a horrible job. And you know me, when I speak, I provide evidence. I had it on, I sent it into the county, oh, mayor, I spoke to that kid, oh, they're just going to cut the money. No, this is causing too much pollution and litter around the neighborhood. It's not the people throwing the garbage, it's, it's the company, and I, please, I don't know why he keeps, keeps even hiring. Because like I said, one thing, and I will show you, it's all about litter and pollution with New Brunswick, where all of you are going to see wow how affecting due to where, what, with the river down there, with New Brunswick being polluted with all, with, 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 with this, this company, where it goes through the drains and all. It's not just people who've done it. How, please, please tell me how? Why do you keep getting this company for? You say it's not in any of your towns, it, we don't want it. Please, like I said, I have videos, what, to show, what? They won't even pick, pick the recycling up, it's behind your car, they'll leave it, leave it there? Please, I'm going to ask you again, how many pictures do I have to show you, video to show you? We do not need this company. We can go back to waste management, and plus, we have a company here on Jersey Avenue with these. And I hope you do listen, I, I will, I, now that I know how you do the videos, I will quick bring the pictures so you can really see the situation with the recycling as well. And then would you please tell me what's for five three three, where you're saying, well, this is a violence for black community, and what, what township, what community are you recommending this to?
It's less here.
Oh, God.
Because, because I find this very hard for you to believe, due to where, what? If, if, this is with New Brunswick, either way, crime and all color. Like I said, New Brunswick isn't even really black anymore, due to where, for, like I said, I'm curious. Due to where, what? You know, I know photographer, I know news person, crime calls are closer always. What, twenty-four, two weeks ago? No, I'm not no racist white, but what was four, four hundred and fifty back to heroin from New Brunswick? While you have others, so like I said, whoever wrote this was saying violence to a black community, like a black people, black people are the only ones that do crime in here, anywhere. Come on, you shouldn't have put that. You should have just put it towards, to help violence in, in a community. Because like I said, crime, you have crime, ignorance, and whatever, in every race. And it's very disappointing... And it's very disappointing whoever, whoever really wrote this, especially if you were really putting this towards New Brunswick. Due to where, like I said, come on. I'm very disappointed. Who, 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 who can put this up here? Who, 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 who put that up there?
Yeah, this is a, this is a grant fund for the Doria County, and specific to this--
Either, either way, like I said, what, crime happens all, all over? Like I said, why would you do, do, do that? That's very disrespectful, and I call it racial. Due to where, like I said, I'm a photographer, I hear all the news come from everywhere. What, every color? What, purple, come on. I'm really disappointed whoever really put this up here. Meaning, like, black people are the only ones who do violence or do crime.
We're not saying you got it wrong.
Believe me, and I'm really collecting that, that's what it says. So, it's just training to serve the black community by helping eliminate violence. So, please tell me, what, what does it say to you?
Again, I think it's best that we provide you a copy of the grant and the purpose of the role that the Center for Pardon plays in our community. It's not specific, it's just a block.
Then, then you, you shouldn't have wrote it down in that, that way. You should have said, "community."
Thank you. Anyone else in the public want to speak? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes just to speak on resolutions listed on the agenda.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Sotomayes Mills, from the Millsix County Department of Corrections. And I represent the president of PBA Local 152. On behalf of our membership, I just came to thank the county commissioners, as well as our county administrator, Mr. Aldean, for the smooth process that we just completed in doing our contract, getting our contracts completed. The officers are glad and thankful that the county not only, you know, basically acknowledges the difficult job that we do, but is comforting to know that you're also appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Move to post the public second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. So, anyone that has to vote on the--
Resolutions separately?
Yes, correct. 22-521 and 22-522.
Anyone else?
No.
Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Commissioner Director, motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 22-440, the resolution 22-545, excluding resolution 22-483, which was previously voided, and resolutions 22-521 and resolution 22-522 to be voted upon separately.
Your motion? Local call?
County Commissioner Ashler Barber? County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Capel? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director?
Yes.
Now, County Commissioner Director, the appropriate consensual resolutions, which were excluded by Commissioner McCollum, those are resolution 22-521 and 22-522.
Your motion? Local?
County Commissioner Ashler Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Capel? County Commissioner McCollum?
President of the Senate.
County Commissioner Tamara? County Commissioner Director?
Yes. Okay. This time, I open up the meeting to the public. Anyone wants to come up? Is there a motion to close?
I'm glad you asked.
Let's go, folks.
Let me have a question from the law.
My name is Marie Shen, and I found this--
And, and, and your address, ma'am?
Out in North Brunswick in Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay. And I found this meeting tonight with Ronald Rams.
That's me.
That's you. That's how I found it. And also through the park. They said there was a meeting at 7:00, but the lady told me it was 6:00, so I got there early. But I'm not on any committee. I enjoy Johnson Park, the animals, but I am concerned of their safety and their welfare. And I know you addressed a lot tonight, but I'm just not clear on really what you said. There's just so much dialogue that the substance of it got lost for me. I would like just to know the bottom line that concerns me, the animal, and the animal lover that I am, I just love them to death over there. I just want to know if they're going to be safe.
What, what I mentioned earlier in my statement is that we are going with the assessment and recommendations of the professional consultants that we hired. We are going to-- we moved four alpacas last week to this sanctuary. And then, what we're going to do is create a husbandry program at our old Jersey--
East Jersey Old Town Village. What does that mean? Where's that?
Well, it's a program-- and Rick, where's Rick? Is he here?
It's in Johnson's Park. It's in an area in Johnson's Park that's--
Above the--
Home Park. So, over there, where the, an area where the animals will be--
Would you complete them where they are now?
No, no, no. It's going to go in, in where East Jersey Old Town Village is. We're going to put fences up there so people can access the animals and feed them. Okay? They're going to be protected. And that's going to be an educational program over there. The other animals, we're going to move, we're going to have our zoo advisors, the professional consultants, vet places where the animals can go, and sanctuaries, and that's where we're going to put them.
So, you're picking the sanctuaries where they go?
I'm sorry?
You're picking the sanctuaries where they go?
We're going to have zoo advisors investigate different sanctuaries to see which ones are suitable and willing to take them. And then, upon their recommendation, that's what we're going to do with the rest of the animals.
And that's going to be over what period of time?
Well, we're looking to start that ASAP. Within the next week, we're going to have-- you know, zoo advisors will be going out and researching the different sanctuaries to put them. So, within a few weeks, we, we expect the movement of the animals.
But this has been going on for how long now?
Well--
I mean, I've been reading it since last September.
We've been trying to get an assessment, because we have people from both sides of the issue. People that don't want the facility there, the animal haven, and then we have people from that do want it to stay there. So, you know, taking into consideration the assessment that the consultant gave us, we're not going to keep the animals there forever. We're going to move them and research where we could put them in different sanctuaries.
Okay. So, they're going to be really spread out?
Well, they're going to go to different sanctuaries. I mean, you know, for example, like goats that are, have a family, we're going to keep them together--
So, birds, yeah, they have to be--
They'll be together where, where they go.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Lisa Tarzian. I live currently in Somerset, New Jersey, but I was born and raised, lived in Woodbridge Township for 30 years. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for continuing the Plays in the Park program, because as a child growing up in a blue collar town, my folks didn't have very much money, as most of the kids in the neighborhood. We weren't brought into New York to see Broadway plays, and Plays in the Park was a great enrichment program for us. And I remember it used to be-- for those of us as old as I am, in Byden Woodbridge High School. And we had a Shakespeare play featured every summer, and it was incredible. And it's, it was a great memory that still stays with me, so thank you for that. Anyway, I've been coming here. I'm an administrator for New Jersey Animal Save, and I've been following-- we've been following, of course, the progress with the Johnson Park Zoo. So, very happy that the county has considered and is now looking into embedding the many wonderful sanctuary and rescues that were submitted. And the animals are all doing very well, as Uncle Neil has been telling you. And thank you for relinquishing the llamas as well, the alpacas. So, from what I understand, then, the new husbandry program is due to open in 2040, and I'm glad to hear that the public will not have direct-- 2040, was it?
No, the husbandry program is not going to open up in 2040.
Okay.
We're, we're working on that as we speak.
Okay.
With getting fencing to make it proper and safe, and, and then the animals will go there--
Okay.
For that educational program of that.
Well, I'm hoping that your zoo advisor will let you know that, you know, if you're not going to have the public have access, like, so you're not going to run like a petting zoo where the public can pet and feed them? Because there are certain standards that should be brought into play, like scan sanitizing stations and whatnot, you know, approved food, that's--
There's going to be two fences--
Okay.
--to protect the animals so that nobody could reach them and feed them.
Great, great. And the other thing would be, then, to have a way to stop the public from having access when the park isn't open from dusk to dawn?
That's in, that's in our plan too, that--
That's wonderful.
--once the East Jersey Old Town Village closes, there will be no access that people can get by the animals.
And then, you will have an evacuation emergency plan in place if that portion of the park is, you know, might possibly flood in a major storm event?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, yes, once again, Danielle Moore, Somerset Street, New Brunswick. First, I would just like, as usual, the main person that I always give a compliment to saying thank you to, that's our engineer, Mr. Ron Sanders. New to our, thank you for everything that you've asked for, putting up the signs, making-- helping, making, listening to me, helping New Brunswick get safe. I do thank you on that. One thing, I know you're an engineer, but honestly, I wish you was in that chair, president, due to where I knew everything would be getting done the right way. Where what? I only have to show you the evidence one time, and how you'll respond and do it right. It does not take, what, those six months to a year to do something--
That's too hard for me, Danielle.
Well, like I said, I give you the credit. I wish, I say you should be in that chair. But my main concern is for the county, not just New Brunswick, the county is going to have to step in, due to where now, I'm going to put it on the board next time I go, but I can't put up, print all these pictures. That Raritan River is polluted. I met-- all this filth, like I said, it goes into your park, Johnson Park. I don't even think you'll be able to open your park, due to where, from all this pollution that goes into your park as well, from down to-- due to where Mayor Cahill, which is time for him to go, he doesn't want to pay any workers to keep it clean down there. And you know all about the sewage that comes from Joyce Cameron Jersey Avenue, goes into the Raritan River. This is to show you how, with the Raritan River meets with earlier first lake at Johnson Park, at high tide. Now, like I said, I'm going to go over there first thing in the morning and do more pictures to show you after all the rain, how that tide is coming in closer and closer. And this is why what I'm telling you, due to where the county, the city, and state is going to have to get ready. They put out a warning Sunday, Channel 12, are ready to manhandle. Get ready for another big major flood, due to where that was nothing we seen last year. As a person for 45 years that I've known that Raritan River, it needs to be dredged. Every time the tide goes out, you're not to see the bottom of that river. That river used, and canal used to be 20 feet deep. When the tide is going out, you see the bottom, where you're-- I will show you what your boating dock, where you made-- wasted over $4 million. What, nobody can even drive through there with a boat any, any, anymore? When the tide goes out. This is the boating dock in Rutgers. You never saw the bottom of the river. And like I said, if the ground rising, it needs to be dredged immediately, because tide comes in, it's coming further, further into your park and all the other locations. While we get a major hurricane, that wasn't even a, nothing that we really got. You see how bad it is? But like I say, it's time for the river to be cleaned and dredged, due to where-- this is Johnson Park to show you, that's a bench right there, how close that water is coming, not just regular high tide. I said, I'm going to show you the difference tomorrow after all of the rain, how, how close this water is really coming in, just at high tide? Because the ground is too low at all of your parks, and like I said, filth, garbage, all of this comes into Johnson Park and well. Something needs to be done immediately. And like I said, immediately, like I said, high tide. You see the water coming through Johnson Park? Coming through Johnson Park? Like I said, until you dredge this, make it deeper, original river, come on, too many-- not even just New Brunswick. I have to say, too many people are going to be suffering from flood damage. Why? Because this river-- and here, here, your dock, right here. What, we paid over, why, close to $4.5 million, no use. You can see in the picture here. No one can't come through there. The waste for the city and the county need to step up and get ready for this severe hurricane threat. For 2022, that they're saying already. I know you're seeing how the damage to wind is, how much rain we're getting already. I don't even think you'll be opening Johnson Park up, with so many of your trees minging because the grass is so saturated? Please, something going to be done. And like I said, I know you listen to me, Mr. Ron Sanders. I don't have to be no engineer to understand, wow, to see the bottom of this river is not even deep for, what, a boat to go by anymore, really? Unless you're, it's too, too-- high tide. But please, I hope that you do look into the matters.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Janet Ratliff, Somerset, New Jersey. So, I just want to ask some questions to get a little more clarity on what you stated. Said the zoo advisors are going to be looking to place a lot of these animals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are they placing them in zoos or other sanctuaries? Or is that not determined?
Recommendation from them is to transfer them to sanctuaries, and, and that's what they're going to do. They're going to assess different sanctuaries to fit them.
Okay. So, does that mean that you would not be using any of the sanctuaries that were previously approved and offered to take these animals and were waiting for them?
Just a clarification. The zoo advisors to make sure that there's a vetting process, a place, a such criteria of those facilities that are interested in receiving these animals.
Okay. So, wait, they're going to have--
So, those who have received will also be able to receive fish, if they will be included in that overall assessment.
Okay.
We just want to make sure, we want to make sure that those sanctuaries that are interested in the animals meet a criteria that is acceptable to zoo advisors, and these are the standards to make sure there's no liability or risk to the animals. It was obviously very providing, animals too, have demonstrated that, so they may be on that, they will still be interested beyond those who have participated already.
Okay. So, am I understanding correctly, they're basically putting together a vetting process, but they're not specifically doing the vetting? Or they're doing both?
They will be doing that.
Okay.
They're always requesting the, the animal, this, the whole vetting process.
Okay. So, they will still be in consideration?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Will the county be reaching out to them? Are they to reach out--
Zoo advisors will be reaching--
Okay. So, they know who is on that list? And they will vet them?
That's true.
Okay. Next question is, you said that some of these animals will be going to Old Town. I believe you said the horses, the goats, chickens--
Goats, three goats.
Oh, just three goats?
Three goats, two horses, six roosters, and a cow.
The cow from Merrill?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, Nippy will-- Nippy's going to go to a sanctuary, I'm assuming?
I'm sorry.
Nippy the-- I'm sorry, Nippy the mini horse. He's going to go to a sanctuary, not to--
Sanctuary.
Old Town.
Hold on.
Okay. So, and you also said Old Town is not in designated FEMA flood zone?
The part where, where they're going to go is not in the flood zone.
Okay. So, this part, is it not directly across the street from Rutgers Stadium? Where the houses are?
It's between the houses and where the park and Rutgers should go.
Okay. So, closer, I believe there's like-- okay. Okay, so closer, I believe there's like, okay, and that does not, that did not flood out?
It's not in the flood zone.
Okay. Um, next I wanna ask, you said you're gonna have a husbandry program, who's gonna be overseeing and taking care of those animals? I'm assuming this is still through the county, but who is gonna be overseeing them?
Mark, Mark, can you answer that question, please?
Sure. Uh, Mark Nonstop, Division of Health and Safety for this area of historic preservation. So, East Jersey Old Town is a collection of historic buildings in Johnson Park. Part of the ongoing process there is to bring a plan in place to address a model of historic animal husbandry program that follows other historic sites, and to build a model around that. The site itself, we are going through an accreditation process with the American Alliance of Museums. So, the importance of creating, planning, and processing protocols behind all of that, you know, will dovetail into the work that we're already doing to try and, you know, a professional history.
Right. Oh, thank you. But what I meant was, who's gonna be overseeing the animals' day-to-day care?
Our employees that we have.
The same people? Well, there'll be, I'm assuming there'll be different protocol, more stringent vetting in place?
And there will be more training for them.
There will?
Yes.
Okay, because, I mean, you guys, I'm sure with all the videos and info we've given you, understand that the care and the conditions that they've been in over decades is not adequate, they need better, better care.
Thank you.
So, it'll be better standards.
There will be training for our employees to treat the animals according to zoo advisors' recommendation, to make sure that they're cared for properly.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Your time is up, thank you, sorry. Anyone else in the public wanna speak? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Anna Prasowska from Firthamboy. I just wanna say thank you for all your time and consideration to the zoo matter, and I just wanted to show a video that we made for tonight.
Our knowledge about the severity of the flooding in the Johnson Park Animal Haven is based on county records like this one, where official Kevin Nagy states that the flooding in the zoo was three feet in the building and up to the bear cage, as well as records like this one, where an email to Parks Director Lear says that flooding was approximately four feet high, up to the flagrant equipment adjacent to the zoo. We have numerous eyewitness accounts, photos, and videos showing the severity of the flooding during Hurricane Ida in the animal haven and its impact on the animals. Despite this, some individuals affiliated with the Parks Department have stated that our photos and videos have been cropped and altered, cropping out dry high ground. For this reason, we would like to show several videos taken the day after Hurricane Ida, showing the full extent of the flooding within Johnson Park and the animal haven itself. As you watch these videos, please look out for any dry high ground within Johnson Park or within the animal haven that could have possibly been cropped out or photoshopped. This video begins at the intersection of Route 18 and River Road and proceeds east along River Road, along Johnson Park, towards Ross Hall Boulevard. Please watch carefully when this video reaches the animal haven. And please recall the statements of the associates of the Parks Department stating that we are lying about the extent of the flooding and stating that we are cropping out of dry high land. Please remember the statements that the animals had ample dry land to stand on and that the only reason why they stood in the floodwater was because they liked it. Here we come to the beginning of the zoo, where you can first see the closures that contain the horses. And please remember that this is the end of the zoo that is on the opposite side from the river. This is the highest possible ground available to those animals. Then on February 3rd into February 4th, there was an ice storm in Middlesex County, and once again, as usual, the fowl deer enclosure flooded. The fowl deer stayed stuck on the highest elevation they could find in their enclosure because they did not want to cross the ice water to try to get to their shelter. We recently received a communications record from Parks Director Lear stating that there was no flooding on that date and that we were lying. It ruins the credibility and the trust between the public and the county, for a public official to say that a video-recorded event did not take place and that the citizens are lying. And this is a drone video over the Raritan River during Hurricane Ida. As flood season begins again, we are prepared to record every flooding event involving animals in Middlesex County parks.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Ryan Feldman, Bridge to New Jersey. Good evening, Commissioners, I just have a couple questions, just some more clarification. I wanted to follow up from what Janet was asking you guys. So, Old Town, not in a flood zone, correct?
Where they're going is not in a flood zone.
Not in a flood zone, okay. Anything could happen, there's a flood zone all around them. Should that area flood, do you have an evacuation plan in place currently?
Yes.
And what is the evacuation plan?
We will have an evacuation plan when they go there to make sure that they're safe.
But it's not done yet?
It will be done when they go there.
Okay, so in two weeks, at the next meeting, can you give us your evacuation plan? You said the animals are going to be moved in a week, you said that, you said face that?
I did not say a week, I said we're gonna, in a few weeks, we plan on moving the animals. And what I'm saying is, you asked me if we're gonna have an evacuation plan, and yes, we will.
The sanctuary animals are gonna be going out as fast as we can. The, as the director said, which is what he said before, the East Jersey Old Town section, once the pieces that we need to put that together, that'll be, they'll be moved then, but that, we don't know the timeframe.
We don't know the timeframe because of supply chain issues.
I understand, that's perfectly fine, thank you for the clarification. When the animals are moved, can we expect that you will have a flood evacuation plan in place before they are moved? Wouldn't that be the responsible thing to do?
We will have an evacuation plan ready when they move, so this way, if, when they get there, if there's an emergency, they can get removed.
Right, with vehicles, you're gonna know which vehicles of transportation are going to be used, where the animals are going, all of that would be in the plan.
Part of the plan for them to go.
Wonderful, okay, thank you so much. You also mentioned that zoo advisors is going to be finding sanctuaries, is that correct? Or are they vetting the sanctuary that we already ate?
They will be vetting the sanctuaries, whether they be new sanctuaries or the sanctuaries that are already took in.
New sanctuaries, okay, okay. With the new, both, thank you. With the new sanctuaries, zoo advisors is a zoo consulting organization, correct? They are not a sanctuary. So I'm wondering why we would trust a zoo consulting company to do a job that they are not experts in, like vetting sanctuaries? We've made it clear that there's a drastic difference between Johnson Park Zoo and sanctuaries. So, how can we ensure that the animals will be safe with these new sanctuaries that zoo advisors is going to vet? How can you ensure that?
Because that's their expertise.
It's not their expertise, though.
Well, that's your opinion.
No, no, they're a zoo consulting company, they're not a sanctuary consulting company. So, that's not my opinion.
Are you a sanctuary?
I am a sanctuary.
So you're willing to take the animals? Some of the animals?
I come here every two weeks and I tell you about the animals that I gave to them.
I'm asking you, are you willing to take animals?
Absolutely.
Even the fowl deer too?
Oh, I will make it work. If you will release them to real sanctuaries, I will make it work because I have the capacity to.
We're not gonna send them to sanctuaries that we don't have any confidence in.
Director?
Yeah, sure.
One of the concerns I had was the, I mean, we put together a, what we thought we needed from sanctuaries, you know, or multi-else, zoo advisors in the field, whether you wanna say they're a zoo or whatever, they're in the field and relying on their expertise to come up with probably a more defined of what we, a better definition of what we need from sanctuaries, you know? Because, yeah, you can have a sanctuary that's good now, what's their long-term plan? What's their financial plan? Does it take more money, does it take more animals, and what's their, you know, funding?
Yeah, well, we do have plans in place for that.
And I'm not saying, I'm saying that is something that, you know, I express a concern about.
Great, okay, thank you. Will we get knowledge of where the animals are going, whether it's older sanctuaries or the newer sanctuaries, will that be public knowledge?
Sure, we'll let, yeah, people wanna know, we'll let them know where they're going.
Okay, thank you. Animal husbandry, you have yet to tell us what that is. I don't need a long-winded answer from whoever else in the audience, please tell us what is animal husbandry?
Animal husbandry is, Mark, you could explain it very simple. I'm on the meeting here, okay? And I'm gonna ask Nippi because he's better, he's well-versed.
It's breeding.
And he's more than I am.
It's breeding.
It's an educational program.
It's breeding, it's breeding, that is what animal husbandry is. And you've told us, yes it is, and you've told us at multiple meetings that you guys are doing everything in your power to not breed animals and to stop breeding, so why are you starting an animal husbandry?
We're not gonna have, we're not gonna be breeding animals like this, or that.
So, why is it called animal husbandry then? What are you going to be doing then?
It's an educational program that's gonna be relative to the 1700s and 1800s, if you wanna elaborate, Mark.
Time's up.
Director, you shouldn't elaborate on that. It's not a breeding program, there's several models, Williamsburg has a model, Old Street Garden, Sturbridge Village in Massachusetts has a model. It's, uh, keeping heritage breeds and making sure that those heritage breeds are preserved, interpreted, educated, raising awareness about those heritage breeds. It's not a breeding program.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Brittany Vanderstein, I'm from Jackson, New Jersey. I did wanna start by saying that I'm very thankful for the Commissioners, especially you, Mr. Rios, for working not only around us, but with the opposing side. I know it definitely was not easy, so I am grateful for your efforts and your announcement today. If I am understanding correctly, all animals will be moved out of Johnson Park, right? No more animals residing there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what's going to happen to the existing structures at the haven? Are they gonna stay there and be vacant? Are they gonna be knocked down? What's gonna happen with that area?
We're gonna have to repurpose them, and if there's modifications that need to be made to them, we will.
So, they're...
You know, whether they, whether we repurpose them to move them to the East Jersey Old Town Village.
Oh, okay.
But Director, I think the question is, what's gonna happen to that area?
Yeah, yeah.
And that area's gonna be, we're gonna look at doing some other type of use there, other than...
Oh, okay, nice.
Not for animals, though.
So, no animals will never, ever, ever be back there?
That's, our goal is to move them and have them at the husbandry program at East Jersey, and the other ones go to sanctuaries.
That's super good news for me, as long as there's no more in that specific area.
That's our goal.
I love that. Um, for the future, you know, saying that we're gonna take all those structures down, is there anything gonna be put in place, like any rules or restrictions that no animal will ever be there ever again? Like, what can we do to ensure that, anything?
I think that this commission and board is committed to making sure that we don't follow the recommendations from French and Pearl and zoo advisors.
So, is this a promise, no animals will ever be there?
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take them out of there and put them back.
Well, I, hey, I don't know, man. If it's not like county...
That's not the plan.
Okay, I'm gonna take your word for it. So that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Charles Crowe, Leveon, Brunswick, in Brunswick today. Concerned about the legal representation that the Middlesex County Environmental Health Division has had over recent years, you may have seen a story about Philip Moran III, attorney, who failed to oppose the motion in a case where he was representing the county Environmental Health Division and covered it up. Apparently, you know, described by the disciplinary folks as a prolonged scheme of deception. And I know that Mr. Kelso and his firm were intimately involved in supervising this person, and it took them several years, I believe, to figure out the scheme. Can Mr. Kelso respond to the situation and also let me know if this Florio Perucci-Steyhart-Cappelli firm that Mr. Moran was working for at the time continues to be, you know, contracted by the county? And once I'm assured that the Middlesex County Environmental Health Division has proper legal representation now, I know that firm had to pay, or chose to pay $40,000 to settle the matter, I know the person has now been disbarred for three years, suspended law license for three years, and, yeah, it was misconduct for his own community area benefit while representing the county. So, Mr. Kelso, what do you have to say, and what assurances can you provide?
Well, first of all, that's really quite a distortion of you trying to distort that into thinking that somehow we mismanaged. In fact, it was Jen Burgess, my partner myself, who uncovered the scheme that he was running, which involved forging the judge's signature, forging the signatures of the defendants, and forging county's signature. And I give Jen Burgess a lot of credit, she uncovered it, she's a member of the Ethics Committee, we turned it over to the Ethics Committee, we are the reasons why he got disbarred for three years. Frankly, he should have been disbarred permanently. The fact of the matter is, the county lost nothing financially from it. The problem was that Mr. Moran and his firm used their own funds in order to make sure the county was made whole. So I would rather not you try to imply that there was mismanagement. The firm had been the environmental prosecutor for a number of years, and Phil Moran obviously made terrible mistake that he's paying for, the county didn't suffer for, and it was to credit to Jen Burgess who uncovered it and made certain that the Ethics Committee took it to the Supreme Court.
And that was clear in the newspaper article, Charlie, and you know that, that Jen Burgess was the one that uncovered that.
Thank you for explaining. Can you tell me, is Florio Perucci-Steyhart-Cappelli still working for the county? No. Okay. And I guess, you know, the only other thing to ask about is, who is in charge of representing the Middlesex County Environmental Health Division now?
Well, the county council's office represents the Environmental Health Division, Jen Burgess handles the environmental prosecutor.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up about the Livingston Avenue project, I was surprised to see places on the, on Livingston Avenue that were supposed to get bus stops, and they got bus stops, but no shelters. Mr. Sander told me it's up to the city whether they wanna build the shelters. Why did we do all this work, but we're not gonna put up bus shelters to keep people sheltered from the elements when they're waiting for the bus?
Ron, I'm sorry, or Solomon?
Charlie, yes, so the way it works is the county allows the city and New Jersey Transit to put the bus stops on the road. It's up to the city and Transit to work out whether it's healthy or may or may not go. We don't have a say in that.
Okay, well, I do recognize that there's a member of the New Brunswick mayor's office on the board today, I would just ask respectfully that bus shelters be installed, there's no reason not to have them at the places where the bus stops, it will encourage ridership, it will make folks have a better experience when they come to New Brunswick and ride the bus, and it seems like a missed opportunity for the city to not take them up on that. I understand NJ Transit pays the cost of the installation, the city will just simply maintain it. Also, I wanna ask about the Fresh Grocer Building, the county's been paying now for four months to rent it, but nothing is happening in it. I wanna point out, this was a project where the MVP A wanted to build a giant parking deck, they got what they wanted, Robert Wood Johnson wanted to build a fitness and wellness center, they got what they wanted. The thing in it for the community was supposed to be a community supermarket, well, that failed, so now it's gonna be the prosecutor's office, and...
Thank you, Charlie, your time is up.
Just to finish up, the fitness and wellness center has stopped closing, so your time is up. This is really too much.
You are, your time is up, you're out of order.
Sir, what are you doing, sir?
You're out of order.
Thank you.
You're out of order.
It's too much. Power's going to your head.
Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to co, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you coming.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Vagan, I'm from Monroe Township. This is my first meeting, and I just have a couple questions on protocol. I had this issue with our town meeting, and I just wanted to address how this is handled. When someone emails you or sends a written letter, when and where is that concern brought up? Because, as you know, there's many disabled people, elderly people who can't get out, you all have emails available, so when we send you one, what happens to it?
What?
Because you don't respond.
Did you send them to me?
Oh, I sent them to all of you. In the past...
Okay, well, if I could ask you, if you could be sending them to me and I would answer them, or I have my department head, whichever department, respective department is for that question or problem, I'll have them get back to you.
No, I won't, because my question now... Because my question now is what do you do about them? Do, I'm sure in this last month, people, citizens, who paid for us all to stand here and have these lights on, have emailed some of you about something or called your office about something? And not one of those things warranted being brought up in this meeting today?
Excuse me?
I, I, I...
Director, can I make a comment? So, you know, I'm fairly new on the board and I can tell you my email, there's a response. And you will hear from someone. We don't bring the responses here. But we do get back to the individuals that actually send us emails.
I find it hard to believe that none of these commissioners, including myself, have not responded to your emails or had, had a department head on our behalf reach back to you. I find that hard to believe.
I, I can tell it about...
So, so what happens is you'll send an email to one of us and usually we'll hand it to one of our department heads to address and have somebody get back. Do you think that's warranted? And if that didn't happen, again, did this happen in our last meeting? You know, apologies, um...
But what I want to know is, when you hand that to your department head, what is the next step? What, what adventure comes with it? How are you and this group made aware of community concerns?
The department head gets back to us and lets us know that they spoke to the resident or the business owner and letting us know that they resolved the, the problem or how they are addressing the problem or forwarding the, whether it be a state or, or federal level concern that we've, that they addressed it that way.
We're sending, we're sending it back to the town.
So if someone gets, you give it to your department head and they gather it and let you know, hey, I'm getting a lot of people complaining about the animal kingdom, or I'm getting a lot of people complaining about, you know, the roads in Jamesburg. And they bring it back to you. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, we have.
And so if I email one of you, when is that brought up to all of you?
Well, it does, it may not be, it may not be necessary for the problem to be addressed or brought to the attention of the rest of us. If it's a, it's a...
But if it is?
I'm sorry?
If it is, when do you bring it up? Do you bring it up here at this meeting?
No, no, we'll bring it up. We'll fol, we'll follow up or forward the email to the rest of the board and letting them know that, you know, the issue was resolved or the issue is worked, you know, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, then what, so what will happen? Let's say there's a road that's bad in, 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 in Jamesburg. And they go out and they take a look at it and you see that it's beyond doing some minor repair or whatever to it. Uh, then that would then get added at some point into the budget for the road program that's going on. That goes on the, you know, there's so many roads that we do. Uh, so that would be added to that. Not to say it would be added the next year, but as soon as, you know, we can financially put it in, that's usually what'll happen. And then we'll just come through the budget process and, and like, you know, that, that capital flow.
I just have a concern, especially at my town level, you know, and I have emailed you also, but that nobody ever gets back. And there's no, um, there's no checking on that. You know, they just don't respond.
What, what was the concern to that beginning?
Well, I've been emailing, you know, a couple of times over many a space. It is, my concern now is that you don't get back to me. Not, not the specific thing that I emailed you about.
I have, I have to go back to what the director said earlier. If you could resend them, because I, I, if somebody was sending me multiple emails about different subjects, I would notice things that are going on. And on top of that, about three months ago, I'm gonna say that at the beginning of the year, if you run it through the county submission like the portal, it'll come to me, it'll go to my department head, it'll go to a couple of the people. So this way, uh, we close that loop. But if somebody's handling it, so I...
Okay, I don't, I just, I only have so much time, so...
Time's up.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Sonia. I live in Highland Park, New Jersey. Um, I do have a video that was submitted that I would like to show, but I think I have like about a minute and 30 seconds before that. So I just wanted to first, uh, thank the commissioners for stating their decision, um, prior to the meeting. Um, it's really helpful for us to make the best out of our five minutes by having that information upfront. Um, the video that I'm going to show is however still relevant. Um, and although I'm really excited that the majority of animals are gonna go to sanctuaries, there will still be some in the Caravan County, um, that I would like to speak about. So the issue I wanted to talk about was just the feeding of the animals. And I know you mentioned that there would be two fences at the new enclosures. Um, there's two fences at a lot of the current enclosures and the animals in the last four months, um, I've seen them being fed bread, crackers, cheese, chicken on a stick, chicken nuggets, cheetos, pancakes, an entire ham, peanuts, almonds, and an entire cake. Um, and that's just the food that, you know, I've seen in the past few months. And these foods are dangerous and, you know, the animals, obesity, health issues. Um, I just want to know what the plan is to stop this from continuing to happen.
There's gonna be a space between both fences of 10 feet that people, and, and they're gonna be protected, that they can't climb and they can't push food through. I can't, I, I just can't comprehend for the life of me how people that go there, and I'm in agreement with all of you, how people that, that they think in their minds that they're animal lovers and yet they're gonna be feeding them, like you said, chicken legs and all these other junk foods. I, I, I just don't understand that.
Okay, so there will be...
We will have control over that once we're able to get that whole hus- husbandry program in effect.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I would like to play as much as I can of the video that we prepared.
A Johnson Park veterinary record from October 8th states that all four apolly pigs are over-conditioned, meaning overly fat, and would benefit from weight loss. The veterinarian instructed the animal keepers to greatly reduce the amount fed. Despite this, no effective measures were taken to prevent the public from feeding the pigs cake, chips, crackers, walkers, and other junk food. The situation with animal feeding is even worse at Merrill Park than it is at Johnson because Merrill Park only has single fencing, which allows people to more effectively get feed to the animals. Barclay the pig, as seen at Merrill Park, is so morbidly obese that he has severe difficulty walking and its belly is raw and sore as it drags painfully on the ground and can even be seen from behind him between his two back legs. After learning about Barclay's suffering, the founder of Arthur's Acres Animal Sanctuary, Todd Friedman, has made a video explaining what proper care would be in this situation.
Um, I'm good if the video can be cut off here. I would rather just, thank you so much. Um, this man is, you know, an owner of a sanctuary and he explains proper diet for pigs, which is really different than what they've been receiving. Um, I realize I forgot to ask, what is the plan for Merrill and Thompson Parks to implement, you know, some structural changes so that the feeding can't continue to happen there like it is?
Well, we're gonna have to make sure that we address the, any issues that were brought up in the report by French and Perrot and Zoo Advisors, whether it be Merrill Park, Thompson, or, or, and obviously, uh, Johnson Park.
So are the feeding, I mean, I don't know, I see people feeding animals there daily, but I could see if there was an official looking person with a clipboard, people might not feed in front of them. So was the feeding of the animals an issue brought up in the report that you received?
Uh, Charlie, do you remember?
We, so we've gotten the report for Johnson Park and that's what we're working on. We anticipate being an issue like that, the same in the other two when we get those reports in, uh, that, uh, we wanted to move on Johnson Park because of, you know...
Please.
But, but at some point, yes, it's gonna be addressed, it has to be addressed, uh, once we get those reports in, it'll give us a better idea how to handle it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kenny. Um, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Sure. Peter Ortiz, um, with from New York, New Jersey. I'm just here talking about Johnson Park. Um, this will be quick. Um, just a couple of follow-up questions. Ryan had brought up a good point about the zoo consultants or advisors who are going to vet or evaluate the sanctuaries. Um, and not necessarily having that expertise, a specific expertise about sanctuaries, because they're two very different things. So I want to know, um, is there a way for this zoo consultant or advisor to consult with the sanctuary or at least get feedback to get that perspective? Because like you said, they are two very different things and, you know, I, I thought the fact that you want to address these animals to sanctuaries, but I think we want to make sure that they understand what a sanctuary is. That's our concern.
Well, they're gonna be looking at what the, you know, what requirements are needed for a sanctuary for safe keeping and healthy keeping of the animals. So, you know, I, I, I trust that they're gonna be able to, uh, you know, recommend to us which sanctuaries, the ones that we have already transferred animals to, and, and, and any new ones.
Do you know though, if they're interacting or, or engaging with any sanctuaries or just getting any feedback?
I believe that they will be, uh, interacting with the, with the sanctuaries.
And, um, regarding the training, like you said, the county workers are gonna get some training. Um, will you be able to share what that specifically is publicly?
We'll be able to, you know, we're gonna take the recommendations from, from Zoo Advisors on what kind of training that our employees need. Because I can tell you that our employees really care about these animals. And, and I'll be honest with you that, you know, even though we got rid of, or we transferred the alpacas, from what I'm told, our employees were a little disappointed that, that we, that we transferred them to sanctuaries because they really care for them. So our employees are gonna get trained and, and I'm not, you know, I, I'm not disrespecting our employees in any way, shape, or form because they, they really care and they try their best to do what's right for the animals. So whatever recommendations that the Zoo Advisors recommends for our, our employees, that's what we're gonna do. Commissioner Kenny?
It's just like anything else, giving them another tool. Um, it's gonna be CEOs. But CEOs continue on, you know, you don't just get three months and that's it. Um, so this, this way they have the best, um, the best knowledge of what's in the field so that they can better care for the animals.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, just one more question. Have you or any of the other commissioners, um, ever visited a sanctuary?
Have I visited a sanctuary? No.
Anyone else? Okay, I, I would just recommend that, you know, maybe take a weekend and, and visit one. It's like, you're, you're placing these animals in sanctuary and I think it would be really helpful and useful for you to actually see what the sanctuary is about and, you know, the difference that the animals in terms of the care and the environment. Um, I think it would be useful for you to see that, so I would hope you, you would have visited sanctuary.
If, if, that's like any other business, you know? I mean, there may be 10, 10, 20 different businesses with the same type of business. That, that, that doesn't mean that they're all gonna be in compliance of what regulations, whether it be through the USDA or, or New Jersey Fish and Wildlife, that they're all gonna be in compliance with recommendations that are taken good care of them. So if we get an independent to look at them and, and tell us that, you know, that these animals should go to A or that one should go to Z, whatever the case may be, you know, we're getting an independent recommendation to make sure that the animals go to the right place and, and well taken care of.
Right, but you've already vetted some sanctuaries, so obviously you've placed some animals. So you know of those sanctuaries? So maybe looking at those sanctuaries and considering visiting?
Well, they, the, the Zoo Advisor's gonna have to go back out and check and see that, making sure that the ones that we already gave animals to, that they're in compliance as well taking good care of the animals.
Yeah.
Like Commissioner Kenny said, you know, you know, as far as, you know, liability in, in, in these animals, uh, these sanctuaries, to, uh, make sure that they're in compliance.
Great. No, and, and I am totally understand and I'm just saying I think it's a good idea, if you can, to visit sanctuaries, see groups out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Ivan Agarwal from Edison, New Jersey. And last week you said you didn't know that these animals had zoonosis. And they eat, and, and, and they, and they mostly do. So how, uh, their zoonosis be like, like treated if, when they go to like, when they go to Old Town or wherever else they go?
I, I didn't hear. Did anybody...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the, come on. The, the fox with the zoonosis, uh, won't be going to, uh, East Jersey Old Town. They'll be going out to a sanctuary.
Okay, but the fox isn't on the animals' zoonosis?
Well, there's also recommendations in the, uh, in what we have. And I don't know what applies to this small amount of animals that we have in the East Jersey Old Town, but it will apply across the board to come up with, uh, stimulation programs for the animals. Um, so that this way, the ones that we still do have in the other parks have some type of stimulation.
Maybe, maybe some animals might not have zoonosis, but how will this, but some animals are, but all animals are still sick, so how will they still get the proper veterinary care?
If, if, if our people see that the animals are sick, they're gonna call the vet to come and examine the animals and treat them with medication, if that's what's necessary.
Yeah, but that's happened many times in Johnson Park. Like you've called the vet and they said that, uh, like in the video earlier, they said that the, the, the pig needed to be fed less, but then Johnson Park didn't hear anything about it. So why would these things, why would these places do anything about it?
Go ahead.
One, one of the areas that we will be, uh, looking at, it goes hand in hand with community education for our employees, um, is to review our veterinary care, um, contract and we have, uh, as far as services and, and how quickly we get those services.
Yeah, so I'm gonna take...
If I'm going with Director?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna take an example of Huxley, the animal that was sent to a sanctuary. So his condition was so bad that he's been gone, he's went to the vet so many times and did arthritic last stage. So it's, it's not, uh, it's not, it's not, it's not charitable. So these, so these animal diseases are most likely like Huxley. They're probably not gonna be charitable and they're probably gonna have to live with them for the rest of their life and they need really good medical care.
Say that question again, I'm sorry.
I can't.
No, I, I know he's talking about the, uh, the one that had the arthritis. Go ahead.
So Huxley the ram had a last stage arthritis and that, and because it was so last stage in Johnson Park, even with the best veterinary care, it couldn't be cured. So how are you gonna help these animals like Huxley, so like some animals are similar to Huxley? How are you supposed to help them with that, if, with, if they're seeing a last stage?
I, I don't know what animals we have that, that, that fit that description of what you're saying. I know we have the one, I don't know about the others. Um, but in the long-term plan, the long-term plan is to better educate and give more tools to our employees, um, so that they can do, you know, their job and also to, um, review our veterinary, uh, program to, uh, to improve that and, and, and go from there. You know, it's gonna be a continually involving, involving long-term plan, um, so as it doesn't just get done, put on a shelf, and never looked at again. It's gonna be something else, just like our strategic 2040 plan that they were talking about before, that's constantly part of the review process, um, every so many years. It'll be reviewed to see how we can make it better and, um, and what deficiencies we have and how to improve it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Anne Marie Clyburn, Middlesex Borough. Um, I have a question about the Old Town section that you're gonna move some of the animals to. Um, I grew up in this area. I've been here just about all my life. And I know that area sits lower than, than the road surface. And I know that area sits lower than than the road surface. And even with regular rain, it gets very swampy. How, how is that a good change for the animals?
It's not in a floodplain zone and that's from our consulting engineer, which is obviously looking through FEMA floodplains, am I correct now?
Yes, okay, so that that area of the park is above the 500 year flood stage. It goes up from elevation 22 to 38. So it's never flooded in that area. So there's a relative comfort that that area will be dry.
But it's pretty, it's pretty soupy now. I mean, because I went on a rainy day, just a regular rainy day to the zoo, the Johnson Park Zoo, and they were walking in in soup, in mud and water. They were sinking, their foot, their boots were sinking. So this is not going to be any different.
I disagree. I'm sure when we put the permanent piece in there, we would look at the drainage and make that work.
I suggest you go take a visit tomorrow to see what it looks like.
If I could, as Ron just said, we're putting up something now, but there's a long, there's going to be a long term or a more permanent facility that we're going to put in there and that will all deal with drainage and do deal with utilities. The goal is, the goal, I guarantee that what the goal is, is to provide a barn so that the animals can be put away at night, not out just, you know, out there in the in the elements. Um, so it's a whole facility that'll be historical in nature and those those areas, those things will be addressed during that part.
But I mean, it's probably pretty soupy now.
Not that, well, it's like, it's on a slope, it's out of the plain, it's a slope, it slopes downhill.
Yeah, but it still fills up with water.
Mark, have you ever experienced any flooding there?
No.
How long you been there, Mark?
Thirty years.
Thirty years, thank you.
I grew up here, I've seen it.
He's been there thirty years, he knows, he knows the area. You, you're not talking about the same area. Where where Old Town is, we come off a river road where the light is, where our park's building is. And you go down the road, it's on the left hand side, it does sit higher. As Mark explained, thirty years he's been there, it's had no flooding.
It used to be in the old days of, correct, the drainage area for the park, these horses. And I, I, I don't know if they were kept there, but it was a drainage area for Ryan.
Is that, isn't that where the other horses drowned?
No, no, ma'am. It's right across the street from the Recreation Department office.
Is that?
Old Coast Lane.
Old Coast Lane?
No, old from new, but it's old.
Old Coast Lane, yeah.
I think you confused the area, ma'am.
I know exactly where it is. I've lived here fifty years, I know.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just think it's going to be a problem.
Well, you thought the barn was there, the barn wasn't there.
I didn't, I never said anything about a barn. There aren't no floods in my mind. I know it's going to flood.
Thank you.
Mark, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kristen Billen from South Plainfield. Uh, thank you very much for giving us our update about Johnson Park at the beginning of the meeting. Very much appreciate that. Just a few questions for you. Uh, will you be issuing a press release announcing your plans that you shared today?
We can, I don't know if if we're going to.
I'm just curious, because I know you did like two.
We may just put, post it on our our website and social media that when when moving along with moving the animals and and working on the, on the Old Town Village, because we want to get the Old Town Village sooner than later. But obviously with this pandemic, you know, it's, it's, part of the problem is a supply chain issue. And, uh, but soon as we're able to get that moving, we're going to, you know, try to move as aggressively as we can.
Okay, I know supply chains are affecting all of us right now in many different ways.
Every industry, every business, it's, it's a shame, but it is what it is.
I would encourage if we can possibly put a press release together at some point, whether it's once you've completed the project or something that just formally announces.
We could do that, we could do that.
Just to kind of conclude all of this.
We could do that.
Thank you. Um, my next question is, I know you mentioned that those caretakers of the animals will have scheduled ongoing trainings. I'm wondering if in your plan, you've also scheduled ongoing evaluations to ensure that those staff members are actually putting in place what they are learning in those trainings.
I mean, we could address that too. Mark, if you'd just, if you mind keeping an eye on that?
Thank you. Uh, last question for you tonight is, um, I know that this is going to be a historical and educational program that you're building and the animals that are coming from the existing parks to that new program, they're eventually going to pass away. What will you do in that instance? Are you going to acquire new animals and where will they be coming from?
Well, this is a, this is a big project to do this husbandry program. And and obviously it's time and money. And for us to do all this time and money and as animals do die, I would suggest to the board that we replace those animals from a legitimate farm that raises them, so this way, uh, you know, that we didn't just put this money into this Old Town Village husbandry program and then once they're gone, they're gone.
And they would be, to further what Director said, they see from heritage type of animals, they would be heritage, not just any animal, but also in the long term plan that there should be intake protocols for the husbandry program and also for the other facilities that.
Okay, thank you. I'm I'm not familiar with these types of educational programs or historical programs, heritage, as you mentioned. So can I ask just further on that topic? The animals that you will be bringing in with this specific heritage background theme, I'll call it, are they going to be coming from farms that are raising these animals with that specific purpose?
That, that I don't know, but I will say it's an overall plan for that whole area over there. There's farming going on on the other side of the park in that area that plants old caribou type plants, sunflowers, mulle years, I mean, it's another year, quarter, another year that they're doing over there. So it's a whole, becomes a whole educational area. It was part of another study that we had done a few years back. Former Commissioner Armwood had recommended it and it was done and it would fit into that, that study that we did and program on how to better utilize that area. As far as your question, I don't.
Okay, last thing that you made me think of, is this in any way tied to Rutgers programs or Rutgers student education? Will there be students on staff working in this program?
Mark?
So we as a museum site have extensive relationships with all the universities for programs that would do with museum stuff. So this is a natural fit where we can extend that for a particular program as well. So yes, I mean, the, the goal here is to include, to include that, collaborate as well.
Thank you, that's all for tonight, thanks.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Nisha Menon and I'm from Somerset, New Jersey. I just had a couple of questions. Um, could, could somebody give me a brief summary as to why zoo advisors suggested that the zoo be closed?
Why zoo advisors suggested it because?
Because of the hate.
The hate.
The hate, yeah, because they said that we, we wanted to try to accommodate, again, both sides that want the park to stay and of course, the people that don't want the park to stay. And that's why we hired French and Perilla to assess the area and and us thinking that maybe they will come up with a plan that we can transform Johnson Park, if that's a possibility, is it cost effective, into still having the animals there? And they suggested no.
Right, so I I understand that they suggested no. I guess the question was, did they provide any reasons as to why they suggested no?
Oh, the, sorry.
Go ahead.
The floodplain is number one. You know, and then as the director just said, the, um, look at the, what we have there and how we could improve it and looking at the report that we had about East Jersey Old Town, this sort of, this sort of plan fit better and that's what they recommended was that, you know, it'd be tied into that number.
Okay, so the report didn't say anything about how the animals were taken care of, about the vet care that they received or, you know, the fact that animals are missing, there's no transparency, none of that?
Uh, as far as missing transparency, uh, as far as other things that were there, stimulation for our animals, as I said earlier, um, I hope this is the first two, I'm sorry.
Vet care?
Uh, vet care, uh, you know, reviewing our vet care program and making improvements if we can do it. So that's part of a long, long term plan. And what was the other?
So, so they did mention that, you know, vet care had it.
They said, I know it was, they said our animals are in good condition. But they said as a long term process, they would recommend that we review our, how we do our vet, not, not the vet themselves, don't get me wrong, but how we procure the vet and what requirements we have for veterinary service.
So they looked at the health of the animals that were there when they were doing the assessment, granted that some of the animals have been moved already to different sanctuaries. So let's say Huxley the ram, for example, who has arthritis and, you know, stage, end stage arthritis, has been suffering arthritis for about three years. Did they look at vet records and say that was sufficient, the animals are in good shape? So, or were they only looking at animals that are there right now?
So I'm going to give you what I know and I apologize. I would recommend that you contact either Johnson or me or somebody to get further detail.
Okay.
They, they went to each of the parks and looked at the animals and viewed the animals. They didn't do physicals on them.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I know. I would double check, I would double check.
I will, thank you. Um, the husbandry program, I mean, what is the reason to even use animals for something like this? I mean, these are animals that are obviously rescued from different situations. I still feel like we're trying to use them in some way. I think one of the animals that you mentioned that will be going to this husbandry program is a cow, again, one lone cow, possibly living in solitude. I still feel like the focus isn't really their mental state or, you know, the fact that they've probably gone through God knows what before they actually got to this place. So what is the purpose of our husbandry program?
The purpose is to have, first of all, that we're having close proximity to Johnson Park, is still having some animals there. We have them at the husbandry program to use as an educational piece for art, for mostly kids. And and it's in relation to the seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds. And and they're going to be in a safe spot at that part of the park where it's not a flood zone.
So I'm, I'm just calling out the fact that, you know, you do have herd animals that thrive in the company of other animals like them that might still be in solitude. So just something to consider, okay?
Okay, time's up.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, Eric Pearlman from Somerset, New Jersey. First, I just want to thank the commissioners. This is a huge step in the right direction. I know there was a lot of, you know, back and forth and I appreciate the fact that you're releasing a lot of these animals to the sanctuaries. Just a few questions, and I know you might not have all of them right now. Some of them, maybe Mark over there could answer. Is there a standard level of staffing for a typical husbandry program? And if so, will Millicent County be following that?
So, uh, I mean, yes, this is all part of the plan. There's this immediate issue that has to be addressed with getting the animals out of their current location, relocating them to other areas. So all of that's going to be addressed. And the best way I can explain it is that we as a historic site, we raise the bar, it was standard that we have to meet. And that's a part of the professionals in what we do with how we care for artifacts, how we care for historic buildings. That is going to be applied to this program as well. And so, you know, we're going to make sure that that alignment is.
Okay, do you suggest that there be on staff, somebody who is experienced in husbandry versus, you know, trying to train somebody?
Yes, and and part of this too, we have a living history staff there as well. They're interpreters, they help tell the county story. They're skilled in the various interpretive areas that they're in. So applying that here as well is going to add value.
Okay, thank you. As far as the assessment goes, we did an open public records request for a copy of the assessment. It was denied. At this point, can we get that copy?
Can you get a copy of the assessment?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And it sounded like there was additional assessments for Thompson and Merrill that are still outstanding, is that correct?
When we brought the companies on, the plan was to assess all of our papers, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I think that's about it. Training, you mentioned, that's a good start. But again, we appreciate, this is definitely a good start. We hope that the care at the, the new facility. Commissioner Kenny, you mentioned that there was a longer term plan as far as enclosure. What's the timeframe for that?
That, I, I don't know, I will.
As far as where, at, at.
At East Village, East, yeah.
There's going to be enclosures and double fenced, it's going to be ten feet of course. So this way, nobody could extend a piece of wood with a chicken leg on it or throw food to it or throw, you know, poison to these animals, you know, and and just not going to be able to get there.
Oh, real quick.
It's also going to be closed too, when, when no one's there.
Okay.
The gate's there and they'll be closed, no one can access to it.
Great, thank you. One last thing, you mentioned the vets. I think we need to vet the vets. There's been some, you know, you know, sketchy kind of care from some of the vets, as you are aware, over the years. I think we need to relook at the vets. I don't know if zoo advisors can help come up with a program for vetting the vets, but I think it needs to be done.
If, if, if I can, I want to clarify, uh, what I was saying was the last part was that come up with protocols for what we're going to put out. I'm not, I'm not here to, you know, disparage any vets or anybody, no, I don't have all that.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Ashley Hartwick of Helen Park. And I do have a video, we can just start playing it now or whenever.
You know this is part of your five minutes?
I do. Okay, so that video is just going to go. So this is the condition in which this red fox has been kept the entire time he's been at Johnson Park. And some people even ask me, it says video on the loop. So you can see the traffic on the right side, you can watch it and know if it's a loop or not. So I'll just let that run so you can see the condition of this fox that he's been kept in by these people in charge of this park. So as far as getting more heritage animals from the farm that is raising heritage animals, which farm is this that these heritage animals will come from? The name of the farm?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
What's the name of the farm that the heritage animals will come from?
Go ahead.
We don't have a, we're moving the animals that the director talked about earlier over to East Jersey Old Town.
And eventually there will be.
Somewhere's down the road, yeah.
So has there been a farm in mind? No, okay.
No, just a discussion of, no, probably not.
Okay, um, so as far as the East Town Village not being in a floodplain, is it stated that there was absolutely no flooding there during Hurricane Ida?
It's above the 500, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
See? East Jersey Old Town is above the 500 year floodplain. There was no flooding there during Ida. The land goes up from elevation 22 to, I think, elevation 38. So it's well above the floodplain.
Right, but there were areas in this region above that elevation that flooded severely. So did it, has it ever?
Where the animals are going to go, the animals are going to go in the hives, part of it. East Jersey.
I've, I've been going to Old Town Village since I was a baby, so I know where it is. So has that area ever flooded?
At my knowledge, as Mark said.
I'll, I'll let you guys know if it has ever flooded next week. Okay.
I think Mark answered that when he said he worked there thirty years and hasn't flooded in thirty years.
Okay, okay, I'll check on that. Um, so as far as the animal husbandry, that usually involves care cultivation and breeding of animals. So Director Vios, you said there will be no breeding.
No breeding.
Will they be raised for meat?
Will they be raised for meat?
Yes.
No.
Okay, just because I'm wondering.
This is a, it's an educational program, it's not to slaughter or 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 breed.
Okay, because if we're talking about what people did with husbandry in the seventeen hundreds, that's what was being done, so, okay, okay, okay.
I said, I repeat it how many times, it's an educational program that we're building there.
Okay, okay. Um, so as far as the conditions of the animals, will they have better conditions than they currently have right now? Or will they be more like seventeen hundreds type of conditions with plywood, open on two sides, open to?
I, I, I think that's, that's a question that I, I think you know the answer to that.
I, I sincerely.
We're going to make sure that the animals have a 21st century area that they can live healthy and and not breed. And we're not going to make it that they're going to be in seventeen hundred type of condition.
All my questions are sincere questions because I didn't want to have to spend the time.
I'm giving you sincere answers and I think.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I explained that.
Okay, so, um, all right, so we're saying that three horses, goats, roosters are being sent there for the heritage breeding program. And I'm wondering which of those species are heritage breeds? And I'm wondering which of those species are heritage breeds? Out of the horses, goats, and roosters and cows that we have now?
Mark?
So one of the cows from Arrow Park, it's a Dexter cow. Dexter cows listed with the livestock conserves as a heritage breed. That was one of the reasons why. It was identified. It's been sent. Two horses are standard thoroughbred. They're not heritage breeds. They have a historic storyline with Middlesex County. We're able to tell that. Goats are coming because my understanding is that they're part of a pot.
But they're not a heritage breed?
Yeah, they're coming because they're part of a pot. And that's what zoo advisors...
Okay. So as there was a statement made that we wanna avoid liability and risk to the animals, which is great. However, it's gonna be under the same care of the people who, it's been acknowledged, allowed 10 animals, so far acknowledged, to die last September. Have there been any changes in oversight when animals die? Is there gonna be any sort of inquiry when animals die? Will anyone know when they die? Or will we have to be the people watching for them to die again?
I said we're gonna have our employees trained regularly. Commissioner Kenny mentioned that, that they're gonna be trained regularly and making sure that we have a good place for the animals to stay healthy and vital.
Okay, but why that is...
Time is up. Anyone else in the public? Yep. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Edward Porto from Newark, New Jersey. I wanted to play a video brought in by Nicholas Huss.
Did you submit the...
Nicholas Huss did. I'm gonna speak on his behalf.
It's under the name Nicholas Huss.
Thank you. This is your sign listed at the Johnson Park. It tells me that it's Mary. Here we see a woman and child throwing baby carrots over the fence. The next clip, you will see a boy and a girl where the boy is stuffing Cheez-It crackers through the fence while the girl feeds the horse potato chips. There goes a man with a bag of Cheerios. And carrots are composed of 53% sugar and apples with, which are 1% sugar. That can lead to health concerns like diabetes when given excess amounts. The animals at Johnson Park are fed by the public from dusk till dawn. Despite carrots and apples as being a healthier option, feeding them excessively is very much detrimental to their health. In this clip, we have bread being fed to geese, which is not part of a peacock or butterfly's diet. A diet that is high in carbohydrates can cause birds to develop a wing deformity known as angel wings. Improper diet can interfere with development of bird's bones and can prevent them from flying or swimming. The public decided to give the fox fried chicken nuggets. What a horrible decision on their part because saturated and trans fats lead to atherosclerosis. So that same sign is directly underneath the skid and still feeds them. Here we see a woman with a three-foot stick containing raw chicken behind the house's cage, as well as a load of bread and a load of Cheerios that we saw earlier. So someone threw a whole carrot cake into the horse pen as well as a goat was given stale tortillas shells, as you see right here. This newspaper article from 1984 shows a lackluster effort when it comes to enforcing a human feeding policy. Either way, I thank you guys for working with both sides on reaching your decision. Moving forward, please do everything that you can to make sure that the animals that are being moved from Johnson Park, the process of going to sanctuaries, that they go to actual sanctuaries and not places like Johnson Park that are an animal haven in name only and are allowing this to happen. The footage I just narrated is taken from a few days ago, very recently. The employees, as well as the director, are not on top of things. So I don't want the animals being moved from one place to another that's very similar. We'll go through the same problems once again. That is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Nicholas Huss, Somerset, New Jersey. Thank you guys for meeting us most of the way thus far. Couple of questions for John Polino, who's not here, Commissioner Rios, Charles Kenny. If you guys wouldn't mind chipping in. Whose idea was this for the husbandry program? And does this program have any direct association with anyone outside of Middlesex County officials? First of all, it doesn't matter whose idea it was. This is a program that was suggested to us that we build it. And that's the direction that we wanna go in because it's an educational program. Commissioner Kenny?
I said earlier, we've done a study over Commissioner Armwood. Had wanted to know how we could improve the East Jersey Old Town area in different programs. And so the husbandry program was part of one of the recommendations that was just never implemented before.
Got you, got you, got you. So how much in tax dollars is this husbandry going to cost approximately?
We don't know that at this point.
Okay. My next question was, are you gonna be spending more or less or the same in tax dollars operating this husbandry versus existing Johnson Park animal haven? So in other words, like gestimulately, like on an approximate right now, does it make more sense for you to move, start this husbandry than it does for you to try to make do with existing Johnson Park? Or is it just better overall to not do a husbandry and to turn the animals over to vetted sanctuaries? No, we're getting both bites of the apple here. We're able to still have animals for people to visit and see at the East Jersey Old Town Village. And then the other animals that it's just not gonna, that East Jersey Old Town Village would not be able to accommodate, they'll go to sanctuaries. So we're gonna still have animals here in Middlesex County that we can, you know, help those people that wanna see the animals. And they're gonna be in a safe environment, as Commissioner Charlie Kenny said and Commissioner Charlie Tenhouse said. You know, we're gonna have fences up there. And when the park close or when the East Jersey Old Town Village closes for the day, it's gonna be closed. People can't go there. It's not gonna be closed where you're gonna see like that where you see people feeding the animals. Okay? When would you know approximately how much in tax dollars that this would cost, this husbandry? I don't know how much it's gonna cost. Okay. No timeframe, duration, three months, six months, year for now? As soon as we can. Okay. I'll follow up with that in the future. What is gonna happen to the raccoons? Are they going to a sanctuary? Three raccoons. Yeah, they're gonna go to a sanctuary. They're gonna go to the sanctuary. Do we know a sanctuary that those three are gonna go to? As I stated earlier, we're having zoo advisors do an assessment to see which sanctuaries these animals can go to and which animals would be appropriate in certain sanctuaries. Could somebody from the group friends of Johnson Park follow up with zoo advisors on what sanctuary that those three particular raccoons are gonna go to? I don't think they'll know right now. Okay. But I mean, I don't know for sure, but I don't think they know right now at this point. Got you. But we could follow up on that though, correct? Like the next meeting, just to... You can ask the question. If we have the answer, we'll give you the answer. Okay. Is Jermaine Farm on the list as vetted sanctuaries? I don't know. Okay. It's my understanding that Jermaine Farm breeds pests and goats for human consumption. Yes or no? I have no idea. Not sure, right? Okay. Is Blue Zoo and the other JP Johnson Park animals that were moved from Johnson Park staying at Merrill and Thompson? Or are they going to sanctuaries, like Barkley the Pig, for example? The animals that went to Thompson and Merrill are gonna stay there. The ones that are at Johnson will either go to the East Jersey Old Town Village. And the ones that are going there or the ones that are not going there will be going to sanctuaries. Got you. Are all your shelters at Old Town going to be... Time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Yes.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Carney. I live in, live in, live at 1311 Arthur Street in Toms River. I'll be very brief because everyone pretty much covered everything. Moving forward, you say that your employees care about the animals, but yet we've come to this. So I just wanted to make that as a statement. Would you consider camera surveillance for the animal parks moving forward?
That's a recommendation that we'll have to discuss.
Okay. And would you ever consider a volunteer program for the animal havens? Like to have the volunteers would be stationed out there just to observe, to watch that the animals are okay?
I don't know if that's, that would be a wise decision being that they would be volunteers. And I don't know if it would put the county in a liability for, and we have to protect the county from liability. So I don't know if that would be a good idea, having volunteers and making decisions or interacting with the general public and maybe making or saying something inappropriate or doing something inappropriate. Then the county would be held liable. And I don't go into, I'm not crazy about that idea.
Yeah, but there's volunteers for other parts, for Middlesex County, for different things that go on, right?
Well, that's a decision that we could, or a discussion that we could have when we get to that point.
Okay, very good.
If we wanna consider that.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? opposed, motion carried. Is there someone here for the denim resolution that we adopted? Can you come forward, please? We had the program earlier that we would have presented you with the resolution for that had we known that you were coming.
I have a copy.
Okay. Probably you wanna handle that? You're closest. So what do you have to do, ladies here?
Okay. So we did a proclamation earlier for Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Observation of Denim Day. Our intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread has mental and physical health implications for survivors and public health implications for every community member of Middlesex County. And whereas sexual assault, sexual abuse, and sexual harassment greatly impact our community, as statistics indicate that every 68 seconds someone in the USA is sexually assaulted. And every nine minutes... Excuse me.
Can you keep it down there?
Thank you. Every nine minutes, the victim is a child. And whereas sexual violence must be addressed with an intersexual approach because aspects of survivors' identity, including gender identity, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, citizenship status, religion, or native language can impact their journey to heal. And whereas also supporting survivors, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to stop the perpetration of sexual violence because prevention is possible. And whereas staff and volunteers of anti-violence and prevention programs in Middlesex County, including the Middlesex County Center for Empowerment and Sexual Violence Prevention Coalition, encourage challenging the social norms that perpetuate a culture of violence, helping to build safe online spaces and speaking out before and when witnessing acts of violence stop ever small. And whereas the New Jersey Sex Crime Officers Association and the Middlesex County Sex Crimes Liaison Officer in connection with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office are dedicated to ensuring the effective investigation and prosecution of sex crimes in our community through inter-agency collaboration and training. And whereas the leadership, dedication, and encouragement can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Middlesex County through increased awareness, prevention education focused on challenging all forms of oppression and increasing all forms of equity, health relationships, and bystander intervention. And holding perpetrators who committed acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas throughout the month of April, Middlesex County supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, and how to help survivors connect with culturally specific services and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Ron Girios, Burt, the board of county commissioners of Middlesex County, do hereby proclaim April 2022 a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And encourage the Observation of Denim Day on Wednesday, April 27, 2022, as well as we join anti-sexual violence advocates and support service programs in understanding that all community members must be a part of a solution to end sexual violence. So we have a draft here. Come on up. And would somebody like to say a few words? We might. Go right ahead. Very brief. No, no, take your time.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for inviting us to participate in honoring the important work of Middlesex County's Center for Empowerment and their colleagues in the field. My name is Dan Sworn, producing director for CoLab Arts.
And I'm John Keller, director of education and the resident oral historian with the Middlesex County Center for Empowerment.
We've had the privilege of building an arts partnership with the center since 2018 through choreography residency, English and Spanish language storytelling workshops, oral history collection, and presently through producing original works of theater and visual art. The services that the center provides extend well beyond therapy and social work. They embrace their clients as whole humans and exercise holistic wellness through art, yoga, and gardening.
I then interviewed both clients and staff as part of our role to connect the wider Middlesex County community with the resources, services, and compassionate care provided by the center. Every individual client I've interviewed has their own unique story. And although they've all come to the center to confront their trauma, none of them are defined by it. They are vulnerable, hurt, brave, successful persons of all genders, races, ethnicities, abilities, languages, ages, and other identifications.
We are honored to be accepting this proclamation from the Middlesex County Board of Commissioners recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
We accept this on behalf of all of the individuals whose stories we now steward, including Mariam, Natalie, Laura, Cheyenne, Caroline, Amanda, Mel, Stephen, and Bree.
We accept this on behalf of our incredible partners, the Center for Empowerment. Thank you.
We can, but if anyone at any time is in search for help, you can reach the Middlesex County Center for Empowerment through the county website. 877-665...
7273.
7273.
So, march into the jury. All in favor? And, close, motion carried.